Session. Today is April 5th, 2023. And we have one council president announcement. Prior to the regular work session meeting, Borough Council held an executive session on property and legal matters. This evening, we have no presentations. We have no land use matters or public hearings or ordinances. So we will get right to council business. And the first item on the agenda for council business is to conduct interviews for our boards and commission vacancies. So this evening, we have two interviews, one for the EAC and one for Mary Wood Park Commission. So let's start with our EAC candidate. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Gerhart Arnt. How are you?
Very well. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Very well, thank you. Hello.
So would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the EAC?
So my name's Gerhart. I'm the owner of Sustainable Land Solutions. We're a local landscaping lawn and landscaping company. We use a sustainably focused, we used all battery equipment. And organic inputs and focus on planting natives. So I mean, located right here in Conshohocken. I work with a lot with the White Marsh EAB. It's actually where I grew up, so I operate a lot there. They have a lot more green space, so. Yeah, I mean, what I want to accomplish here is really to help, you know, provide my knowledge of natives and things that I know, the sustainable practices we implement, to what we can do here in the borough. I mean, you know, I mean, I see tons and tons of things that we, you know, just definitely could be better. And I mean, that's also a shift of what's good and what is conventional. You know, definitely not the same thing. So, you know, I just want to bring forth my knowledge and really help make a positive impact on where I live.
So all those different things that you're thinking of that we should consider or change, what would a couple of those things be?
Definitely more natives, I mean, like exclusively. I mean, there's absolutely no reason that anything non-native should be planted. It literally takes more work to have something that's non-native.
So you do have non-native?
Yes, yeah, it's definitely everywhere. I mean, it also spreads, you know, it's invasive, you know. I'm sure you see the trees that are all blooming white right now, a lot of them are Calorie pear. And it's classified as a noxious weed, Class B. So it's very, very, very tough to stop. But I mean, I think we could, we could definitely do stuff to help that. Also, I mean, I would love to help influence the switch over to battery equipment. I mean, it's a dream, honestly, from a user standpoint. From anyone who, any of our clients, they're like, we can't hear you. They sleep right through it. So I mean, if it's beneficial on both ends, it's really, it's not that hard to really set up and get going as far as like the vehicles and everything. I think it's an easy switch. And it makes a huge impact. I mean, these are some of the worst polluting machines. And they're used at least eight months of the year. So, I mean, it's, it's an easy shift. You know, sustainable practices being, I know this lovely garden is right out here. I'm not sure how it's managed. I haven't checked on it too well, but like, you know, cutting the stuff down and just leaving it there. You know, it's fenced in. There's no reason it should be hauled off. If it is, I'm not sure, but certain things like that. Leaves, like, we have such a war on leaves as a country. But they're literally been dropping for 395 million years since, since the deciduous trees have, have come about. And, you know, nature literally just provides top dressing. So like, I don't know why we have a war on leaves. They could be contained. They're, they're extremely beneficial to the soil and to the pollinators that overwinter in them. And I mean, it's literally nature's soil, or nature's, well, yeah, I mean, turns into soil, but nature's top dressing. So that's one of the sustainable practices that we implement. We leave the leaves, you know, even when, when mowing, they get bagged up, put right on the gardens. And I mean, it takes less, provides less inputs the following year because, you know, a lot of these gardens that are established, full perennials, shrubs, trees, and then full of leaves, they don't even need mulch, hardwood mulch next year. Cuts down on labor and, I mean, it's, it's just a massive mind shift towards the beneficial. And I mean, that's what I do. And I definitely want to, you know, provide that knowledge to, to benefit, you know, like I said, where I live, so. Especially, I mean, the noise levels of these machines are just absurd. You know, the gas machines are just, I can hear them now like three blocks away just because they're so annoying to me. You know, just to be completely honest with you. I mean, I've been doing this for three years now and the battery is just, it's just better, you know, so.
Thank you.
So you mentioned you worked with the White Marsh EAB. Have you had any opportunity to join any of our EAC meetings or participate in any of the events that the EAC?
Yes, the, the previous two. And I will be at the Country Green Fest as well for the first half of the day. Then I am going to be at White Marsh Day. Like I said, it's where I grew up. They got a lot more green space. But yeah, I mean, we're just really going to be providing some information on the benefits of switching to electric, our sustainable practices and planting natives, the benefits of that here and there as well. So, yes, I have.
Great. Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, you say you have a business that you do this. Is it all the big commercial properties or you do small moments or?
Residential.
Residential.
Yeah, and commercial, residential, you know, like the smaller commercial things.
Do these, the native plants, are they sustainable that if you plant along the river, they will keep erosion down or are they better than?
Yeah, oh, for sure. I mean, like I said, with native plants, they don't need babying. You know, like typically, when you conventionally learn how to plant, you have to amend the soil, add fertilizer. Native plants, as long as it's in the right conditions, you throw it in, water it, you know, make sure it establishes water wise, and it's set. It loves this wonderful PA red clay. It's quite happy, you know, I mean, as long as you put it in the right conditions, it's there. One of the things that we focus on a lot is actually taking out a lot of turf grass and converting it into native space. I mean, that's, in my opinion, one of the biggest impacts that we can make as a nation. I'm heavily, heavily influenced by Doug Talmey. If you've ever heard of him, he's a, I don't know if he's a professor at the University of Delaware. But I mean, he is the guru of native landscaping and eco, ecologically landscaping. So I mean, that's my heavy influence as far as the landscape side goes. But like, the reality is most people need their launch mode. So, I mean, that's a, that's what, you know, biggest impact. We do more mowing than garden installs. So if we're cutting out all those emissions, and we are green powered, you know, we're not powered off of coal. Definitely want to make that known. We choose that because I couldn't not, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm good.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. We won't be doing a vote until the next meeting, but. The 19th?
Yeah.
So thank you very much for your time and your information and thanks for your interest in.
Oh, yes.
Part of the community.
I'm excited. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Take care. Okay, we have the next candidate for the Mary Wood Park Commission, Mrs. Nancy DeVitas. Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Good. So tell us a little bit about you and why you'd like to join the Mary Wood Park Commission.
Okay, well, a little bit about me, I'm retired. Have been for a lot of years. Had a second career helping to raise my grandchildren, four of my six. And I'm now retiring from that because they're all old enough now to be on their own, making their own decisions. So I've lived in Conshohocken with the exception of two years my entire life. And had the opportunity to enjoy the use of the Mary Wood Park House when I was growing up. There was a nurses off, there was nurse there, visiting nurse was there, Girl Scouts were there. It was, I was in and out of that building. I always, and just the whole community was always very grateful for the people that came before us that gave so much to this town. Whether it be buildings or financial, you know, things to us. And, and Mary Wood, it was very special because she had one of those green spaces before green space was a thing. And wanted it to be used, because she had no children, wanted it to be used and played with, with kids being able to use, play ball and all that kind of stuff. So along that, with that, I have seen changes in, in the different things. And it's exciting now the borough has taken responsibility for that building as, as it has others within the borough. And I would like to come along and support just the advancement of what we're going to be doing in the building and make the best use of the space. And to be able to maintain the house as it would with, when Mary Wood was there.
Great. What do you see happening with the house?
I'm sorry?
What would you like to see happen with the house?
I'd like to see some, I think it has to go, eh, easy for me to say. I'd like to see kind of both things, the old and the new. I'd like to see things kept that still are working, like if it's, I like to see it, air conditioning be put into that house. So that the beautiful room now that's been done, that was their first and second living room, I assume, in the, in the room downstairs is now able to be rented for small events. Would make it even more appealing if it had air conditioning in it. It would also preserve the building itself so that you're not having the extremes of the hot and cold. I have had in my working career some opportunity to work with construction, not that I'm planning to do construction, but I worked with a real estate company and we did fit outs for banks and then also medical units where we, we do these buildings. So I'm familiar with working with projects and having them, all the people that need to work on it kind of be organized and, and moving forward. So I basically preserve some of what the history is. I'd like the portraits of, you know, the woods to be back in that main facility, that kind of thing. Present, I don't think they're there now, at least it wasn't when I was there last.
Yeah, I think we pulled everything down to paint.
For the paint, oh, okay.
I think we were talking about reframing them also.
Yeah, probably along that line, it would be good to do something that would protect the painting itself with the, yeah, you know, with the committee and stuff.
Great. So. Do you have any other questions?
I'm good. She's not loud.
Okay, there you go. Do you have any questions about the committee or what this group does for the borough based on the charter or anything?
I'm sorry, the council itself or to the?
The Mary Wood Park Commission.
Mary Wood Park Commission. I know that they've been working together and, and with this restoration that has been done with it. And I would like to come alongside of that with, I understand that needs a new roof. There's, I know when I've seen it, it definitely needs to be painted. A lot of the beautiful, beautiful architecture is, is in jeopardy of being ruined by the elements. So I'm sure that that's the path that's been going so far, at least that was my understanding.
Yeah, so this group is not the fundraising group. This group is the one that is the strategic team to look at what could we do to maintain Mary Wood's endowment in that area. And then this group also works in coordination with the fundraising arm to be able to then do events and different things to raise money to continue to put back into Mary Wood's gift to us, so.
And one, I don't know whether it was something I dreamt one night or whatever, but part of having someone, having rental in the, in the, in the house piece, the back house of the home, would also, I had thought would bring an income in too. And plus have somebody in the building that is a little more kind to keep it safer with people and in and around the building. So that we, I don't know that we've had any kind of, you know, any kind of things happening, but I think it deters any opportunity, opportunities for that, so.
Great. Well, thank you for your interest. We appreciate that you've reached out and are interested in really being part of preserving our future. And, you know, coming up with new ideas for our community, so.
Thank you very much.
You'll hear from us soon.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, that concludes the interview section of the council business. We'll move to manager matters. Stephanie, do you have?
Yep, I'll kick it off. The first item is the issuance of a notice of intent to award the contract for the 2023 Liquid Fuels Road Program. So we, the project for Liquid Fuels was put out to bid. We received three bids that ranged from approximately 472,000 to 606,000. The contractor that submitted their bid for the base bid work also submitted for the alternate bid. We are lucky that the total amount that we had budgeted for the project actually came in, the bids came in under that amount. So we are moving forward with the project if it's approved. Your meeting materials included a bid tabulation summary. Tyler is here this evening if you have any questions for him directly. But RVE is recommending that the, that we approve the issuance of the notice of intent to award the contract to Scott Contractors, Inc. For the 2023 Liquid Fuels Program. And then because we have a responsible contractor's ordinance, the notice of intent, if approved, will be posted. And there is then a 10-day public review period. And after that review period, it'll be back on your agenda to actually consider authorizing the award of the bid. So for tonight, it is just notice of intent to award. So we can move forward with the ordinance requirements.
Anyone have any questions about Liquid Fuels? Okay, with that, I would ask for a motion to authorize the issuance of a notice of intent to award the contract for the 2023 Liquid Fuels Road Program.
I'll make that motion, sorry.
That's okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And just to clarify for the record, that motion is to appoint Scott Contractors, Inc. Just because that was cut off, so I just made that in there.
Okay.
For the towing agreement. Our current towing agreement was with EVB Service Center. That was a three-year contract. The relationship between EVB and the borough in terms of all our emergency management services is very positive. They were instrumental after events like Storm Ida. And our emergency management team, along with EVB Towing, have created alternative options that are available to us now in emergency situations. The contract is up at the conclusion of 2023. So we are recommending that you consider a new agreement, three-year agreement with EVB Towing that would be from 2024 through 2026. Again, this is for discussion this evening and review over the next two weeks. And it'll appear back on your agenda on the 19th. But this is going to be a recommendation by administration that you consider approving this new towing agreement. If you have any questions, I can walk through or.
We've had no issues with EVB Towing in any of the different scenarios that we've used them for the borough?
No, the complete opposite, actually. They've been very helpful. And they've been, they've made the borough a priority when we've needed to be.
So a new asset to the borough?
It's a new, a new asset and a new relationship to the borough.
Anyone have any other discussions or questions?
No.
Okay, that will appear back on your agenda in two weeks. The next item is an escrow release for 144 West Ninth Avenue. That is in the amount of $18,015.30, if so inclined.
All right, with that, I would like a motion to approve 144 West Ninth Avenue Financial Security Escrow Release Number Two in the amount of $18,015.30. Will I make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
The borough is the award recipient of 2022 CDBG grant funds. Those dollars will be allocated specifically for an additional curb ramp project in the borough of Conshohocken. In order to proceed with that project, we need to put out an RFP for engineering services. That RFP draft was presented to you in your meeting materials. It will appear back on your agenda on the 19th. If approved on that date, it would be advertised on the 20th. Proposals will be due in May. A review of any submissions will take place after that submission date. And then it'll be back on your agenda in June for potential consideration to award if we receive bids that we feel are applicable to put in front of council for consideration. With a, you know, timeline, tentative timeline of construction being complete in October. The intersections that are, that we are looking at are going to be East Fifth Avenue between Harry and Fayette Streets. And that will, that is not part of the Liquid Fuels project. That is closer to Fayette Street off of an alleyway. So that will take care of that whole section there. West Eleventh Avenue, West Tenth Avenue between Wood and Maple, West Fourth Avenue, and Wood Street between West Sixth and West Seventh, and Freedley Street between West Tenth and West Eleventh. Any questions on that RFP?
No.
And again, this is, this is money that is grant money, not utilizing borough tax dollars.
No questions? Hearing no questions, we can move on to department matters. Today, we have a presentation on the Conshohocken Aggressive Driving Campaign. Chief Metz is going to present the police department's aggressive campaign. Hello, Chief Metz.
Good evening, everyone. And thanks for the opportunity to speak to you all and the residents. We, we've heard this term, I don't think it existed when I became a police officer, aggressive driving. I never heard it. But then somehow it became into the vernacular and, and that has a lot of awareness out of it, you know. And I try and get the word out through enforcement and education about, you know, driving habits which can lead to, you know, tragedies, injuries and deaths, and leading causes of accidents. And, you know, it's what, it's what, aggressive driving is what you would think it is. It's weaving in and out of traffic. It's tailgating somebody in front of it, it's excessive speed. It's a speeding up to go through a red light. It's disregarding a stop sign because you're in a hurry or whatever. So this awareness has been out there for a while. Unfortunately, we had an accident on a crash on Fayette Street in the last several months that resulted in a death. And this was a direct, it was a direct result of aggressive driving, what you would call weaving in and out, falling too closely and excessive speed. And that person was subsequently charged with murder and homicide for that accident or action. So I thought we'd take a look at it. I know you all receive complaints from your constituents, maybe the number one thing, I don't know. I don't receive a lot of them personally, but I do on occasion. I know you probably in your travels speak to people a lot. And they look to you for solutions about what they observe in driving and traffic accidents and traffic related bad behavior. So we took, you know, I thought we'd take a look at this and maybe we'd do something different. Maybe I'll put a tool in your toolkit that you can share with your constituents. Like the constituents that are watching now can take from it and understand what we're doing and have an avenue to get in touch with us. So what, you know, what we can expect and what we'll do is target certain areas in town. Mostly the high traffic areas, the city that the biggest impact of traffic in town, but not exclusively. And we would target these areas with selective patrols and targeted enforcement. A lot of what we do today, but we'll just do it in a different manner and have a more focused approach to it along with an avenue for people to complain about these things. So you can expect to see us out there in the coming months. The warm weather's here, people are out, the parks are being used. You can expect to see us doing these things on a regular basis. Like I said, where, where we target these is, you know, where we think it may have the biggest impact, where we're getting the complaints. The, the high volume areas, the state highways, Fayette Street, you know, the pedestrian, you know, areas along Fayette Street that could be impacted by aggressive driving. So how can you help? You know, first of all, we can all be, we can be good citizens, right? And abide by the traffic laws to be the example, right? And, and think about this when we go about our daily travels. And, you know, slow down and come to stops, it completes stops, it stops signs, let people see you do that. Make sure the guy behind you sees you do that. You know, that's a way, that's something we can do together. And for the residents, they can report this to us in a particular way that is under development right now. And we are going to have, similar to the citizens complaint that the boroughs had and run for the last few years, we'll have one for traffic specific complaints. So the idea is, we get the word out there, we advertise this. You all can speak to your constituents about it. And like I said, it can be your tool to present to, to the average person that you talk to that has these concerns. Give them a way to, to sit down at their computer and send us a direct message with a specific problem, where it is, what time of day they think it would be, it's happening the most and stuff. Give us a way to focus our enforcement and give the resident the ability to actually have feedback from us. So they, they, they reach out to us, we reach back and say, okay, we got your complaint. If there's any more information that we could get from them, we'll, you know, we'll garner it then, pass it on. And then in a follow-up, if the enforcement, specific enforcement has taken place in these areas, we'll, you know, get right back to them, you know, in a week, two weeks, depending on what it is, where it is. With specifics about, all right, thanks for the complaint, this is what we did. These are the hours we were there. These are the citations that were issued, these are the warnings, the amount of stops, whatever. Just to make them part of the conversation and give them what we all want, some validation, right? To let them know that somebody's listening to them. And to give you all a way to reach back to them and say, look, you know, you have a specific complaint here. The police have this, they're listening. They want to help you, you know, and send this to them, we'll have a record of it, we'll have a way of managing it. And at the end of the month, we'll send you all a report and you can see how it's working out. Okay, how many, how many of these we got? And I do encourage you to, you know, to use this, you know, to more, we'll, we'll advertise it. It should be up, Kelly talked to Paul earlier, he thinks probably next week. But, you know, I don't have a specific date, but I'll, I'll be sure to let you all know and we'll put it out there. And every opportunity we get to advertise it, we will. And like I said, you know, like we, we should start just by being, you know, good drivers. You know, we all have been in a hurry and been frustrated, right? You know, you gotta take a step back from that. People do get killed and we had one here. And I don't want to see that happen again. Any questions from anyone?
Anyone have any questions for George?
If you're going to be doing this in specific areas, will they be cited or just given a warning?
It depends. It depends on the officer, you know, who has the stop at the time, whether they're going to issue a site. The officer has discretion and.
But don't, don't you think that if we started giving out tickets instead of warnings, that the word would spread that you don't want to do this in Conchi because this is the fine you're going to get? Instead of a warning? I think it has more of an effect if, borough-wide, if we start.
I think it has more of an effect if borough-wide, if we start giving tickets.
Okay, I mean, I understand where you're coming from. That's your opinion on how, on how this should work. I have read a study in the past that studied this, and I actually looked for it, anticipating this question from someone, right? But I couldn't find it, you know, I thought it was published, and I know it was published because I read it in a publication, but I couldn't find it online. But it addressed these things. I think it was like the Michigan State Police or something that did it. And they found it, it didn't have any impact on the accident, its driver behavior or whatever, you know, that, a disparate impact between warnings and citations. I can tell you this, violator contact is important because you, you know, everybody's driving by when you, and they do it every day, they do it every day. And when you're driving by and you see a police car with someone stopped, that has an impact on the driver, right? Do you think?
Absolutely.
Okay, you know, like, say, oh, yep, you know, the police are out here enforcing the law. When an officer does stop someone and approaches the car, you know, he's going to make determinations based on, you know, are your things in order? Do you have your property license and insurance car? What was the, what was the nature of the violation? Was it egregious? Is, was it something that needs to just be addressed? You know, that's the, the, the decision the officer's going to have to make. He also has some tools. When we stop a car, every, every, through the computer at dispatch, every car that gets stopped in the county gets, you'll have all the priors from that. So in other words, you stop somebody for a stop sign violation, and the first, one of the first things you're going to get is the priors. And if they have two or three priors for a stop sign violation, that'll influence the officer on whether he thinks you deserve a ticket or not. Listen, a stop sign violation, you have any idea what it is? Have anyone gotten one recently?
It's one hundred and twenty bucks at this point?
It's a hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and that's, it only goes up from there, right? And we get a very little piece of that.
Right.
It's mostly fees to the state. So I could tell you, like, some people deserve a ticket, and I stopped lots of cars in my life. Some people, they deserve a ticket and some people don't, and I've, I've stormed up cars like I'm going to write this person a ticket because of what I just observed, and I ended up leaving them gone, right, with a warning. And that, that, that got determined by our interactions, and, you know, like, does the person accept the responsibility for it? They want to hold court with you out on the street. And I mean, these are all the things that determine whether you get a citation or not. I also will caution, it wouldn't be legal for me to tell those police officers to go out and lay everybody off. They have their own discretion, and I can't put a quota on them.
Well, no, I, I don't.
So I can only, I can only ask them to do what I asked of them, which is their job, and traffic enforcement is part of that, and they do it, and they have the stops, and I hear them all day long, and I look at them in the logs and the reports that they are stopping cars and making violator contact. Does everybody get a ticket? No. You know, they don't. And, you know, I hear what you're saying, you know, maybe it does, because, you know, when it comes to the big stuff, I want, I want you to go to jail, right? When the big stuff happens, I'm like, yep, that, that dude should be, no, five years isn't enough, it's me can. So I get where that comes from, you know what I mean? And all those, all those people get offered, not a warning, but maybe less than what they deserve, right? So I'm just saying, and, you know, a lot of people we stopped were residents in town here, they're not, they're not lawbreakers, they're, they committed a traffic violation, and, you know, we address it. And, you know, it's funny, we, I don't know when it was, a year or so ago, maybe, I spoke right here about, not exactly the same topic, but this topic came up. And there was a person in this audience that, who I did not know, that within the next couple, couple days, he sent me an email telling me that he was at the meeting and he heard what I said about getting a warning, and he said, in his case, it, it, it was, I was absolutely right, because he said he was committing a violation that he didn't know was a violation. So he got stopped for it, the officer, you know, addressed him, all his things were in order, he went on his way with a warning, and he said, it worked for me because I didn't have to pay a hundred and fifty-seven dollar ticket, and I don't do it anymore, right? So I, I felt validated at that point, you know. I might have tried to share that, I might have shared that with Paul too.
So I think to Anita's point, the main concern that we've heard from the public is, we had someone here a couple meetings ago, with specific locations where there seems to be violations of stops, of people blowing through stop signs. And what you're here tonight to basically say to Borough Council is that based off of that feedback you've received, that you're proactively putting this campaign together in, to respond to those concerns, and that will be specific areas that are targeted. There still will be police officer discretion. However, we need the public to know, the whole borough to know, that the police department is going to be told by the chief of police to start this active aggressive driving campaign.
Right. And to, to that point, the, the woman that spoke here a month or so ago about a, a specific intersection, because there was a school bus stop.
Right.
So she's there every day and she sees it, and when I talked to her, you know, I said, you know, what, what time would be the best time for us to be there? And we did, we were there that week and the following week, you know, to address it. So that, what happened there is going to happen here, but in a more formal manner.
Right, and in that scenario, instead of, I mean, everyone is always welcome to come to a public meeting, but now, just like if you're a citizen and you have a complaint related to an administrative item, you can go on a portal on the website and it gets submitted electronically. That same convenience will be available for any concerns as it relates to aggressive driving.
Exactly. And, hey, listen, as far as that woman was concerned, like, I love, I love that interaction because that's, she's not somebody that's sitting at a keyboard making comments on a post about somebody complaining about traffic. She was concerned about it, and she took the time to come here, state her name, and, you know, what the problem was, and I, and I was more than glad to go out and, you know, address her and have that kind of interaction and the, and give her service, you know, to try and help her out. I mean, I love it.
The only problem I see is that it's happening everywhere, and it's like, your guys are going to be spread thin.
Well, listen, it happens, it does not happen here, like, you know, like, every, every, when I drive on the road, every, every day, we see things like this, you know, people violating, you know, like, that's just, there's a lot, forty thousand cars a day go through here, right? And I say, yes, there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot of cars, and there's a lot, there's seventy-some intersections in this town, so there's a lot of intersections too. So everybody's going to have, but you know what, it gives us an ability to, to focus on, on certain areas and to be responsive to people.
So George, you had mentioned this time last year, you were here talking about a similar topic. So we obviously know that things heighten a little bit when the weather starts changing and kids are back outside. What can you do to promise the residents that this, what you're talking about today isn't just a reaction for what's happening today, and that you've built this now into the culture and what you do in the police department for the borough of Conshohocken?
Well, what I can, what I could say is, look, this, what we're doing here, or trying to do here, offers some accountability too, right? I mean, it holds me accountable. If I'm going to stand up here and tell you, look, this is what we're doing, and I, I want to give you, I know we give you reports now that you can look through and see this act, this activity, but, you know, as far as these traffic-related things, I can present them to you, and then you can see what we're doing and share them. And anybody who wants to have a conversation with me about it, I can do it. You know, like, I think the awareness is what we, we need to keep up, you know, and, you know, just to keep talking about this and be seen, and?
And I think the citizens, the, whatever this reporting system is, is a way for you to sustain getting information ongoing about what's going on, that then you, you know, it's not out of sight, out of mind.
Exactly, and it gives you, it's, it can only get bigger, right? It can, the more it gets used and the more it's out there and gets advertised, it can only get bigger. So, you know, what I'm telling you, what I'm standing here telling you is what we're going to do. And if you think I'm failing in, like, in any way, please let me know. And if there's anything I can do better to, you know, make people feel better about this campaign and what's going on and about them being heard, I'm all ears.
I think it's a good start. I think what you've presented us is both a reactive and proactive approach to the issues that we're seeing on the roadways in Conshohocken, and it's a starting place that I think that we'll be able to gather data for you guys to then know where to address things, and I think that that's a great starting place, and I appreciate, you know, the work that was put into coming up with some new solutions and, and new ideas on how to address something that's really important to the residents of Conshohocken. So thank you for your presentation today.
Great, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your hard work.
Okay, next up, we have no legal matters this evening. Mr. Peters?
No.
Okay, council member matters, mayor matters? Anything for today?
No.
Okay. Any public comment on anything that you'd like to talk about?
Easter egg hunt.
Okay. Stacy, Stacy, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Anita?
The Easter egg hunt is this Saturday? Saturday.
Okay.
And the Clydesdale's are Friday night.
Yes.
Clydesdale's Friday night. Four to six, four to six on, on Friday.
Okay. Karen?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, the mayor wishes everyone a happy Passover for today. He's sorry he couldn't be with us, but he has an exciting night with having a baby and all the activities, so he wishes everyone a happy Passover. I wish everyone a happy Easter in the upcoming weekend. And with that, I will say, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.